It's officially seven o'clock, or 7:01 or 2:00. 7:02.
Dr. David, sort of, he.
Okay. We have a roll call, please?
President Byrne?
Here.
Trustees Cook? Oppenheim?
Here.
Takaoka? Brown? Schultz?
Here.
Marport?
Here.
Okay, we gave a cord and present. The first item.
Oh, pledge allegiance.
Oh, pledge allegiance, Jesus. I'm like, oh, man. Yeah, it sounds good. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay. Any citizens here that want to address the board on anything other than what's going to be on committee at all? No? Okay. All right. There's not too many, no report. So the next one is the Anabu's vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through F?
Motion to.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second. Comments or questions? Roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Marport?
Aye.
Cook? Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka? Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Next item is unfinished additional business. And this item is approval and passage of an ordinance 2020-018, an ordinance authorizing extension of professional services agreement between Morel and Fiedler LLC and the Village of Vernon Hills in the annual cost of $54,000 for the calendar year 2020 and '21. Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So made. Second.
Mr. Mayor?
Motion.
We, this was on the table, put on the table, I believe?
Yeah.
So can we do a motion to remove from the table first?
Oh, okay.
Off the table?
Yeah, all right.
And you can do that by a voice vote, you don't need a roll call for that.
Vote, first and second concur?
Yes. Yes, that it should be a motion to remove this item from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion is second, roll call.
Wait, wait, can I, uh?
Not yet.
Oh, not yet, okay.
Roll call.
This is non-debatable, a motion to remove from the table or to table is non-debatable. When we get to the motion to approve, that's when the debate.
Yeah, obviously, you're going to be able to talk.
Okay.
Yeah, we just need to get it off the table to open.
Roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook? Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka? Brown?
Motion carries. Okay, now, the, okay. Well, I got a motion and a second on this already, so.
Correct.
Okay.
No, no, you don't.
No?
But I will make a motion to approve this item.
And I will second, but.
Yeah, I know, yeah, there's a motion and a second, under comments or questions. Dr. Oppenheim?
So, I'm just reading what was passed out earlier tonight, one of, uh, one of, there are two of the letters I'd read before, but one of them from the state representative. I've not, um, not had a chance to read until this, until this moment. So, the, the general issue here, from, from my standpoint, is the, the language of a particular bill that our lobbyist group was, was forwarding along through, with, with the state representative McDermott. And, uh, to me, it still seems as though there's, there's question as to whether or not the goal of this language is to, to overturn the ability of communities, whether it's our community or the city of Chicago's ability to prevent the sale of puppy mill dogs. And the person that I'd spoken with from the Humane Society said his people believe that it's pretty clear that the goal at this point is to, is to not disallow our home rule municipality decisions, but actually overturn the city of Chicago's, um, goals. And, and that's still not acceptable to me. So the, the language was, um, I'm not sure if it's written here or not, but, um, the first part, yeah, here it is, Home Rule Section 3.10.
This is the, from the state rep?
This is from this, from this, well, the letter in the 1818 advocacy group references this. The, the first part of the section 3.10 of that House Bill 4105 talks about how, how it makes the blanket statement saying that this does not overturn home rule, doesn't preempt home rule ability to, to zone, operate, or permit pet stores. But the, the latter half of that, um, 3.10 section says this, with the exception of, of anything that deals with sourcing. And from what I've learned is the, the Chicago ordinance speaks specifically about sourcing, and that was the, the goal of, of Petland and this representative through our lobbyists, is to preempt Chicago's rule. And so the question is whether or not this will even be allowed to pass as is, because any preemption ordinance requires a three-fifth vote. And since they put that language in the first part, I think it misled some people to think that it wouldn't require that. So, so this, um, this other organization said, sent a letter to the House Legal Department to, to get a ruling as to whether or not this really is a preemption bill. So the gist of all this is, is that there's still some questions in my mind, and, uh, as to whether or not our lobbyist is, is working essentially against our efforts, maybe not locally, but on a state scale. And if it passes at the state level, under the current legislation, there's the chance that this organization could use that and say, well, now it's not allowed in Chicago, maybe, uh, maybe we should look at not allowing it elsewhere. So that's the concern.
Jim, can you speak to this?
Sure. Typically with, and I'm not real familiar with the Chicago ordinance, I haven't studied that ordinance, but as you, you all know, there was the case in 2017 that challenged the Chicago ordinance that prohibited the sale of, of puppies in Chicago. And that was the, um, was the case, Park Pet Shop versus Chicago. And, and the court, the Seventh Circuit upheld that ordinance on the basis of home rule authority. Now, what we all know is, in order to preempt home rule authority, there has to be express preemption language, or the matter has to be of such a statewide concern that home rule authority can be read into, preemption of home rule can be read into this. Now, this, this ordinance, or this statute, does not preempt home rule authority. The new language does not preempt home rule authority. And, and I, I, I don't, I think Chicago can argue it doesn't preempt them, given the fact that it does not expressly preempt home rule authority. Home rule preemption is something that really should be dealt with out in the open, so it's not, it's not an argument. So again, I haven't studied, Mayor, I haven't studied the Chicago ordinance, but I could tell you this, this, this statute, prior to this amendment, or with this amendment, does not preempt Vernon Hills or other home rule communities from prohibiting the sale of animals in their community. Now, this tail language, David, if someone's confused about the tail here in terms of provided that no regulation, et cetera, speaks to sourcing.
Sourcing, yeah.
I'd have to probably look at the Chicago ordinance a little bit more, but I don't see this as a home rule preemption statute.
Well, it seemed like that was their goal, at least, in a, in a circuitous way, where, to do that. And, and when I asked Mr. Fiedler, why don't you just get rid of that confusing language? He didn't have a good answer for me, and he wasn't willing. Didn't seem like they were going that way, because there's really no point in that language to talking about sourcing. It didn't seem like it added anything, so it seemed like that was really their goal, because.
I could see the confusion, but again, if they wanted to preempt home rule, they really spelled that out.
Well, I, I think they, I think they wanted to, but they were fearful that if they said, this is a preemption bill, we're not going to allow Chicago, then clearly it wouldn't, it wouldn't go through, because they would need the three-fifths vote. But I think they were trying to do it in a circuitous way, and I don't know if that, I don't know enough about the legislature, if that ever happens, if, if there's ways to backdoor home rule, or preempt home rule in a, in a, in a sneaky manner.
Yeah, when you're, when you're going to do it, and it's not in an express fashion?
Yeah.
There has to be a case that the issue is a matter of statewide concern. For example, regulating pollutants and emissions that the I E P A governs. I, I would say that that's a matter of statewide concern, that the I E P A governs that. The Seventh Circuit in the pet shop case in Chicago made it pretty clear that regulating the sale of animals within a municipality's boundaries is within the control of a home rule community to do that. That falls within the, the government and affairs of a home rule community. That's what that case stood for. The other issue in that case was whether or not the regulation that Chicago was implementing affected interstate commerce in a way, that violated the Constitution, and they found that it did not. So that case really went a long way to, I think, establishing a home rule community's powers in this arena. Certainly doesn't hurt to get more information on this language, but again, I, I think home rule is protected.
Can I, can I make an alternative amendment to the, to our ordinance, to say that we'll approve, to continue to, because I, I know we're still using this lobbyist group, and, and, you know, the legislative session is, is upon us now, so maybe we can approve it for six months, and then, and then see how things play out with this?
Well, the, the actual ordinance is what, for?
Two years.
Two years. Yeah, okay, well, I, you know, we're, I don't, we're not going to be affected by this.
Right, we're clearly not affected by this. It's more a question of whether or not we want to have a lobbyist group that represents us, also representing, you know, someone who's counter to our interests for that.
I could only say that, you know, we, we've used them for years, and, you know, this is the first time something like this came up. And, you know, in essence, you know, they, they've really protected us from, you know, losing real revenue from the state. And, and they're, you know.
I, I get that, the question is, are they the only ones that could do that? I don't know, I don't know if they're truly the best, if, I, I understand that you've used them, I just don't know what, what our options are, that's why I was suggesting we'll just continue along, but, but not lock ourselves into a two-year commitment in case this, you know, this or something else makes us feel otherwise, and, and we can look and see what other options.
Well, you got a motion and a second, correct? Okay. Does anybody else want to comment on this?
I'll let my vote speak for itself.
Okay.
I just, I just look at the, we've dealt with them for all these years, and they know us, and they know what's going on down Springfield, so it's, it's very difficult. And I don't think you can throw, hey, we're going to look at you for six months.
Why?
Why? Because I, one, you're changing their contract, it's two years, and this is what we've done in the, in the past, so. I'd probably stick with also my second.
You know, there's a, there's a lot of revenue bills going on down in Springfield right now that are of concern to, should be to us and obviously staff. Okay, trustee Cook?
Well, as in, in the spirit of compromise, I, I, I think the six-month idea is a good idea because of the fact that it, it gives us a chance to see how this shakes out. And see, you know, if there's any, you know, ripple effect to it, any, any further effect to it that we might now want to, you know, that might affect us in some way, and it's kind of a, you know, just go with a short term, and then if everything works out, then we'll go back to the two-year rotation.
Well, okay, that's, that's your opinion, well.
I'm just asking, I'm just saying.
Yeah, okay. Well, there's a motion and a second. Does anybody want to amend it?
Who made the mo, motion?
I did.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I made the motion to, to amend that, to six months, so.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Well, the maker of the original motion to approve, as stated, has to agree to amend his motion.
Agreed to amend, right.
Well, or can't we just vote on the amendment?
No, there's a motion on the table that we have.
There's a motion.
Right, but a motion to amend that motion would then be voted on as an amendment. Versus by agreement, versus by agreement.
Which is the other way we could do it.
You can do that, yes, sir.
That's the way you'll need to do it.
Okay, so then I second the motion to amend.
Okay.
Vote on that.
Who, who made the first motion?
Oh, I made the original motion.
The original motion.
As it stands, as published in the agenda.
And then there's a motion.
And then I made a second on it.
Yeah.
Right.
And then.
And then I made the amended motion.
And then.
Motion to amend to six months, which I seconded.
Okay, got it.
So now we vote on the amendment.
Vote on which one first?
Motion to amend first.
Amendment, you have to vote on the amendment first.
Okay. First. All right, roll call.
President Byrne?
No.
Trustees Brown? Schultz?
No.
Marport?
No.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Okay, so now we vote on the main motion.
Okay.
Main motion, yes, sir.
All right. Roll call vote.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
No.
Takaoka?
Motion carries. Okay, next is approval and passage of ordinance 2020-018, an ordinance authorizing approval of the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement for the White Deer Run Golf Course. Is there a motion to approve?
Excuse me, Mr. President, this is another motion that was tabled.
Yeah.
So we need a motion to untable.
Motion to untable.
Is there a second? Motion is second. Roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Motion carries. Okay. There, is there a motion to approve in, in the passage of ordinance 2020-018, an ordinance authorizing approval of the Fourth Amendment to the lease agreement for the White Deer Run Golf Course?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second.
If I may be allowed.
Go ahead.
I look at this now as being, because there is a penalty clause, should future board wish to terminate this, of about $4 million. However, that $4 million will be to allow the operating company to kind of gain some of their investment back that they will be making over the near and longer term. I find this to be a reasonable request on their, on their part. In addition, the cost structure is such that golf courses are not fabulous moneymakers, and it is not a venture that I believe that this organization, and I'm looking at the entire staff and board here, wishes, an enterprise that we wish to gain entry into. Therefore, we have a very competent, if not outstanding, firm, engaged here. So, and seeing as how I am the one that initiated the tabling and the additional research and work that was done, I am very comfortable with the arrangement and the agreement that we've come to, that is stated in this particular ordinance, as so published in the agenda.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Takaoka?
Motion carries. All right. Yeah, what else we got here? Approval and passage of ordinance 2020-019, an ordinance authorizing approval of a professional services contract with Entertainment Management Group for 2020 Summer Celebration in an amount not to exceed $89,500. Is there a motion to approve?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second.
We gonna get a heads up on who they're engaging yet?
Uh, we're not allowed to discuss it until the contracts are signed, but I would think by the next board meeting, I'll be able to tell you, because they have two national acts that are under verbal agreement.
Actually.
Yeah, and this includes the sound and the stage.
This includes, this is everything. This includes the contracts, the negotiations, includes the sage, the stage, the sound, the backline, the instruments, the loading, the unloading. Basically, this is soup to nuts, the entire production, and they are, have their people on staff for five events, or five concerts, and run the whole thing for us.
So is this actually saving us money, or is it the same amount of money, we're just saving all the manpower, or?
Yes.
Both?
Both. Because, because this is the same entertainment group that does so many concerts around the area, they're able to get these headline acts for a little bit better price.
Yeah.
Their fee is 10% of the contract price for the bands, but with their 10% added in, we're paying virtually the same dollar amount.
Wow.
So, and all the work is being done by them. If you could have seen my secretary last year pulling out what little hair she has left, trying to deal with the contracts and the crews and the production companies and the stages, that alone is worth the $90,000, to me. Maybe not to the village, but it's worth it to me.
Yeah.
No, those are, those are real numbers.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Sounds like a winner.
One, kind of, and this is kind of an ancillary, off-the-wall question. I know last year there was some concern about the height of the stage, and have we addressed that somehow?
Yeah, that, that's being, the stage could have been raised up another six feet. And then the sound, the sound booth, which was like front and center, could have been moved off, off-site a little bit, or back a little bit further, so it didn't interfere with the line of sight. That is being addressed.
Great. So it might be raised?
The stage will be raised. Yeah, the stage will be raised, and the, we'll, we'll do something with the sound booth.
Yeah.
So that the line of sight is not, it was just an odd thing, when it was all set up, and you went back and looked at it, there was the rise in the ground, which naturally blocked most of the stage, it's like, oh.
Well, it was because of the new location with all the changes.
Yes, yeah, it was the first time with the new location.
Yeah.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Is that correct, Lynn?
Yes.
No?
Yeah, I thought.
I thought you made it.
You made it.
And then you started talking.
You made it, and Tom seconded.
All right, what do you got, anybody?
No. No, but I don't have the, we didn't do the roll call.
I thought it was.
Cook and Marport.
I'll second.
Maker and Marport, second.
This one?
Oh, this one, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Short-term, I mean, goes first.
Hey, no kidding. Me. Roll call, roll call, please.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustees Takaoka? Brown? Schultz?
Aye.
Marport?
Aye.
Cook?
Aye.
Oppenheim?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any, any, any new business or communication to, yeah, trustee Cook?
Yeah, um, over the weekend, Vernon Hills Boys Bowling took second place in the state.
Yes.
They've had an amazing season, I, I follow the boys bowling, because my grandson bowls at Mundaline. And they, um, when they finish second in the state, when you get to the state finals, it's two days, every guy on your team, five-man team rolls six games, so that's, I mean, 12 games, six each day, 60 games. Over that 60 games, they averaged over 211 a game for all 60 games, which is, which is, I mean, it's amazing. And they, Joey Naprikowski, who's a sophomore on the team, finished 19th, and they had a couple other guys in the top 25 or 30. So they've done an outstanding job this year as a team. They, I believe, won the regional, or sectional as well, and I'd like to see if we can get them in here, bring them in here to recognize them at one of our next couple meetings.
Sure.
But it was a great, a great job, I mean, they just really, you know, went down there and bowled very well.
Good. Trustee Oppenheim?
Trustee Schultz was next, did you?
That's all right.
Well, I didn't catch the light when it.
It was fine.
So I wanted to get an update on the Huntington-Greggs Parkway situation, if we could talk about that. I'm not sure if you're all aware, but there have already been several accidents at that, at that intersection since we put in, put in the, the light beacons. So I was just talking with Director Brown here a moment ago. For one thing, I think we need to, to reiterate to the community that, first of all, stop signs were not, not warranted at that, on, on the traffic study, and, and I understand that this is a, a study in progress, but also, I did have one suggestion, and, as we just spoke about it, and that is to perhaps put another sign proximal or north of the, of that intersection for people heading east on Huntington, that, that says something to the effect of, of, be alerted that cross, cross traffic doesn't, doesn't stop. I'm not sure if any of the accidents were really impacted because of a lack of knowledge of that, but I don't think it would hurt.
Do we have the information on what the accidents?
So, yeah. We can speak about that.
So the police department, the chief will touch base as far as the particulars of the accident. So the, it was set up the first week in January, so we've got approximately 30 days into the, the study. I think initially, there was some confusion as far as people weren't sure whether Huntington was closed and you couldn't turn right before. We changed the message board sign to have a succinct message that you are permitted to turn right. I think that has helped in terms of confusion of the intersection, it being a change. In terms of, people have contacted me in terms of the who has jurisdiction. It continues to, we follow the three-party agreement with the county, Zale, and ourself. In terms of specifics, the agreement requires certain things. The one thing that the county and the village both use is the manual of uniform traffic control devices. That gives you guidelines in terms of when different things should be installed. We, I continue to say, I think the right turn elimination is a good thing. When we read every accident report leading up to it, it was very clear that people were saying, I did not see the other vehicle because my vision was blocked by someone in the right turn lane. So that has been eliminated, so people are seeing each other. My understanding of a couple of the accident reports, the two that I'm aware of, is one that happened as of Friday, it was nine days prior to that, that one specifically included that someone was waiting for a period of time, and then they made a decision to enter. I think they, they waited longer than what they thought they should. The other one was a newer driver, and when they were observing some of the, the 20 or so delineators that were out there, and it had flashing lights, they thought that was someone's turn signal, and they pulled out. Those are the two that I'm aware of currently. So, people have contacted me on a number of ideas. I think we need to follow the M U T C D and continue to do that. People have talked about gating off both ends of Greg's Parkway. We're not doing that. People have asked about putting speed bumps along Greg's Parkway. People have asked me whether or not we could put stop signs on every intersection going up to Greg's. These, I, I appreciate people's inputs in terms of different possibilities of what we might do. I think really what we'd like to do is complete the study. I think really what we'd like to do is complete the study, continue to monitor it, and really in terms of two main items we've looked at, is people have talked about stop signs, three-way stops. They are not warranted, and there's reasons we would not want to do that. Um, the, the pedestrians crossing is one of the major things we want to resolve, and a three-way stop, um, we shouldn't put that up unless it meets the warrants. It does meet warrants for a traffic signal, we've had discussions, and the feedback I'm hearing from the community is consistent with when we proposed to put one in at Lakeview, that, that is something people don't desire to have in a residential area. Um, if we do move forward, we'll continue to study it, but if we move forward, it is more likely that we would put in a traffic signal versus a always stop. That being said, we wouldn't move forward with either of those without having a very good conversation and communicating where we're headed and why we're doing that. Uh, I appreciate our conversation earlier, uh, trustee Oppenheim. Uh, one of the things that, uh, we would like to do is we're going to post the study, because there's a lot of people who are asking questions. We want to get the facts out, so I will put an executive summary to the front of it, and we will post that, so people have facts in their hands. And if people have questions, I am not on Facebook, I don't belong to a number of these different Facebook groups. If people have questions, by all means, give me a call, uh, we can have a good discussion, and, uh, pros and cons of what their ideas are and how we think we should proceed.
And I think, previously you'd put a, a summary spreadsheet about all the different options, uh, in our packet. I think that would be valuable for the community to see, you know, why the roundabout wasn't actually such a good idea, and, um, the, the pros and cons of, of each of those, and I think that'd be valuable for the community to be able to peruse that as well as the actual study. Um, can you talk a little further about the, the county agreement, and I don't know what conversations you've had?
We've had some good discussions with, uh, with the county, more specifically Shane from Eldott, he's the, the highway, uh, director. We are having discussions whether or not the three-party agreement that I referenced, uh, previously, whether or not that is something that still has merit at this point. Certainly with a large development like this, the county board at that time, twenty years ago, wanted to make sure that this large development shared responsibility in terms of traffic distribution. Um, so that is why it was created, and, uh, the board at that time, the county had asked for a, uh, five-lane cross-section for Greg's Parkway and Huntington. Uh, village board through negotiations with the county, um, they acquiesced, and they, uh, agreed to the boulevard system that's in place. I think that was a great decision at that, uh, time. Uh, I would hate to see the crossing op, uh, challenges that would happen if it was a five-lane cross-section. But, fast forward twenty years, when I talk to, uh, newer staff members at the county, they wonder why they're involved in a local road, uh, and why the county has concurrence or, uh, why that's included in the agreement. So, we're having conversations. Uh, I think our position is, we'd like it to be a wholesale, uh, change where we, it's eliminated, rather than cherry-picking one concept versus another in terms of the agreement. So, we'll have conversations with them, and, uh, we'll see where it goes, and we'll report back to the board on, uh, the progress in that, uh, change of that agreement.
Yeah, you know, I was gonna say, going back twenty years ago, you know, let, let's see, was, was, uh, Greg's was already started, and a major portion of it was built. Okay. But, I think going back in time, you know, we always had to get sewer and water, you know, from the county, and it was like, okay, we, we need to, you know, and we weren't paid for the road, I mean, it was the developers, you know, and, okay, I guess we gotta have a sit-down, you know? Because that was all, it's always been, you know, hanging over our heads, like, is, yeah, it, yeah, so anyway, that's just my two cents. Trustees Schultz.
Thank you.
Are we, Chief, I wanted to speak to?
I, I just wanted to confirm, I, I understand that there are, uh, perhaps some, uh, mixed messages among, amongst members of the public. I can confirm, uh, since those bollards, uh, went up, there have been two traffic crashes, uh, January twenty-second, January thirtieth, very similar, um, uh, issues with both. They both occurred around rush hour, late rush hour, six PM-ish, so hours of darkness, and both, uh, were caused by vehicles southbound, stopped, um, after stopping, so they, they didn't disobey that stop, they, they didn't fail to stop at the stop sign, they disobeyed it because they failed to yield to, uh, uh, westbound traffic coming down Greg's, pulling out in front of moving traffic and getting, uh, uh, colliding with that vehicle. Uh, one, one, uh, one resulted in damage to, to the vehicles, no injury, the other one resulted in damage to vehicles, and a minor injury not requiring transport to the hospital. So, I understand that some people might think there's been more, but you can envision scenarios where people drive by, they see the same accident, and maybe reported as multiple.
Well, to comment on that, that, the morning of the second one, it was posted on Facebook that there was another accident, and, uh, and, uh, I actually asked the, uh, asked, uh, Mrs. Kleek about it, because she's the moderator of that group, and she sent me information about the accident itself. I think she witnessed it herself. So, apparently it was not reported to the police, for whatever reason, I have no idea.
If, if there's a minor accident, people can stop and exchange information, they're complying with, uh, the law, I can't speak to what's not reported.
So, to that said, um, we have to make sure that our study is truly a good study. Maybe, if we're only going along police reports, maybe there's more accidents that we don't know about, that are minor, minor things where they just exchange information, and maybe, maybe a stop sign would be warranted, perhaps, I don't, I don't know.
I would like to also add that we have, since we knew this was an area of interest to the board, we have assigned extra patrols and asked our officers to pay particular attention to see if they notice a difference in traffic conditions, particularly during rush hour, because of this temporary modification. I personally drive that at least once a day, sometimes more, uh, than once a day, and so, um, we're looking for feedback. We haven't received any feedback from officers that they're seeing a real consequence, uh, traffic-wise, from this temporary modification. I, I wanted to add, I know that's not your specific question, but we are trying to keep, do our best to keep an eye on it around the clock to see what this change has.
Should we consider putting a camera at that intersection, so that we could have other verifiable data as to the number of accidents that, that are not necessarily reported? I don't know, I know elsewhere in, in the packet we were talking about cameras, so, so I don't, I don't know if that one, maybe not that particular kind of camera that we're going to be talking about later, but, but I don't know if there's a, if it's something we should consider to, to monitor that specific act, intersection, just to look.
Yeah, I.
It's a thought.
Take that under advisement.
Yeah, we, we, we could, we could explore that. I, we know from police officials, um, there are a lot of activities that go on in the community that, that are under-reported. Crime in general is under-reported. We know traffic crashes occur that don't make it to our attention. I, I don't know that anyone would be surprised if there were, um, you know, fender benders that occurred throughout the community that don't get called to our attention. I would say they tend to be very minor.
But maybe there's a lot more near misses, that, that, maybe that intersection is more dangerous than we even realize, that we're just not seeing it until someone gets knocked off a bike, or something like that. Maybe there's a lot more of those, maybe, that might change our overall thinking.
I, I can help speak to that. I, I, I think one, one observation from previous accidents and reading the previous reports is the severity of accidents. Without people seeing one another, they're at higher speeds of people going without hitting the brakes whatsoever and going right through the intersection, so some of the other accidents are more severe in nature. Uh, the ones that, uh, the chief described, sound like they, uh, there is some confusion in terms of, uh, uh, who was moving which direction, and how much, uh, uh, reaction time or stopping that they needed to, to do. So I think they're hitting their brakes at least, they're slowing down, and we're finding less, uh, uh, severe accidents than what we have had in the past, yeah.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree that, uh, getting rid of the right lane, um, was a good idea, and I think that's, that's made it safer, it's just, where do we go from here, and whether or not we've got all the information?
I guess the reality is, are you gonna prevent any and all accidents from ever happening at every intersection around town? And I mean, you know, I mean, I, you know, I know we're talking about, you know, Huntington and, and Greg's Parkway, but, I mean, are there any other places in town where there, there's been some problems like this, you know? And I can't imagine we don't have accidents in other parts of town.
Maybe a thou, we do about a thousand accidents a year, a, a rough, off the top of my head, maybe eleven hundred or so, uh.
You know, and I'm sure a lot of them are on sixty and twenty-one or Butterfield, but is there, you know, neighborhood stuff, too?
Right, right. But, but the differences with this intersection, we're still studying it, we're studying it. So we want to make sure that we're studying it properly, and not just, I mean, we have a perfect example of just last week, there was an accident that I, from my information that was provided, there was an accident that was not provided to the police. So if we're going by the police reports in terms of our overall decision, then, then maybe we need to do something else.
Well, you know, people, you know, exchange their insurance cards.
Right.
And, you know, and I, one thing, if, yeah, if there's something that, that you're gonna handle between the two parties, well, make sure you take pictures. Everybody's got a, a, I mean, I'm just going, if you have a, okay, I gotta let this guy go, I ain't, I'm not calling the police.
Right, right.
I mean, you can document what happened.
Oh, I.
And, and you can take somebody, and you correct me, Jim, if I'm wrong, you could take somebody to the Secretary of State's office, and, under the financial responsibility laws of this state, you can, you can, they could lose their driver's license, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, even without a police report.
I, I'm, I'm not questioning that at all, it's just a question.
Bring that up.
No, no, and, and, um, and it was pointed out on Facebook that if people see accidents that might not be reported to the police, then, then just as a citizen, maybe report the fact that there was an accident at that intersection, even though, even though the police officers did not come out there, just to make sure we've got more data.
Okay.
It's a very important intersection, we will continue to study it, look at it, um, we're laser-focused on this intersection.
Yes, we are, thank you.
All right, any other new business?
Yeah.
Trustee Schultz.
See, you should have gone first.
Um, I'm looking, actually, and hopefully you're listening, Mike, uh, because you're kind of our Comcast guy. Uh, I'm hearing a lot, uh, that, uh, there's Comcast outages, uh, internet outages on a irregular but too often basis, and also, I've been pinging Comcast, uh, cons, for the last week or so, um, and, um, the speeds that I'm showing are way below what I'm supposedly paying for. I'm paying for five hundred to a hundred megabits, or, I'm sorry, fifty to a hundred megabits, and, uh, at best, I'm seeing sixteen megabits. And we've got a lot of, you know, in this world of telecommunicator, tele, telecommuting, uh, that, uh, we have a lot of people working at home, and they need good reliable internet, and, um, apparently Comcast seems to be slipping a little bit, so if we could do a, just a minor follow-up with Comcast, and see if there's some issues going on with our hardware, the infrastructure in town here, and, uh, what they're doing about that.
Well, you know, and Frank Duhl, I think, is still there with Comcast.
I heard he was, yeah.
Yeah, because I talked to him, I don't know, a month or so ago, about something on my, on my TV, you know?
Right.
That wasn't functioning properly. And, uh, so, anyway, uh, yeah, he, he's, he's our, I think he's the regional guy for, for this area, so. We got his number, Lynn, from Frank Duhl? Yeah, I'm sure we do, I mean.
I've got it, if you don't.
Yeah. I got, I got his cell phone.
Yeah.
Put him on the cell phone?
Yeah.
Hey, Frank, welcome to the meeting.
Yeah.
During the meetings.
Okay, all right. What else?
That's it.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn, uh, the board meeting, and go into committee at all?
Is there close session tonight, sir?
No, sir, there is not.
Motion to adjourn the board meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka, Brown, Schultz.
Aye.
Marquardt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. I'd like to call a committee at a whole meeting to order, uh, first item is, uh, approval of the committee at a whole meeting minutes of January twenty-first, twenty-twenty.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second, comments, questions, corrections, deletions? If not, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka, Brown, Schultz.
Epstein.
Marquardt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, the second agenda, request from Adrenaline Special Events in partnership, uh, with Hawthorne Mall to operate an outdoor special event at one-two-two Hawthorne Center. Director Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, this would be the Second Annual Bunny Rock Five-K and Kids Egg Hunt. Uh, the event will take place on Saturday, April fourth, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty AM. Uh, it would be an Easter-themed Five-K family run-and-walk, uh, staged from the former Sears parking lot. Uh, the race route would be the same as in past years, it would cover Ring Road, Center Drive, Lakeview Parkway, and Museum Boulevard. There would be an Easter egg hunt, uh, that would, uh, follow the Five-K, uh, run. Proceeds will benefit, uh, Reach Rescue, which is a rescue adoption center for dogs, uh, located in Mundeline. Uh, the special event application and site plan are attached to your packet. If the board feels the special event is appropriate, then staff should be directed to prepare a resolution approving the event, uh, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet, and representatives of Hawthorne Mall and Adrenaline Special Events is here to answer any questions that you might have.
So you're, you're with who?
I'm with Adrenaline Special Events.
And what's your name?
Austin.
Austin, do you have a last name?
Wile.
Okay. So this is all, you know, been discussed at length with Centennial's reps?
Absolutely.
Okay. And obviously, I just, is this the first year we're doing a run?
Second year.
Oh, second, all right.
And there's no basic change from last year?
Same race route, uh, staged from Sears, parking lot as before, everything's the same.
Motion to direct staff, prepare the necessary documents, ordinances, et cetera, to provide the necessary approvals.
Second it.
There's a second, motion is a second. Uh, all, all, you who are for this indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
I, I did one group vote.
That works. You're getting there.
That's.
Oh, my God.
All right, uh.
Can I, can I just add, uh, I wanted to thank Mr., uh, Atkinson for reaching, pun
intended, reaching out to me, and then I reached out to, uh, my, my contact at the main society to make sure that Reach Rescue was indeed a good player, which, which, uh, he said they are.
Good.
So, uh, we, we crossed our teeth. Yeah.
All right, next is a request from, from Alternative Source Medical for approval of site landscaping and architectural revisions to addition to their facility at six-four-five Forest Edge Drive. Director Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and their addition will accommodate their expanded business operations, which includes, uh, the refurbishing, sale, warehousing, and distribution of medical supplies. Uh, they anticipate up to five new employees, uh, to support these expanded operations. Uh, the project includes construction of a twenty-seven thousand nine-hundred and square-foot addition that would be located off the rear north side of the existing building, and that's shown, uh, in the hatched area on the aerial, uh, in front of you. Uh, the addition would comply with the required twenty-five-foot rear yard setback that's on the north property line, and side yard setbacks on the east and west. Uh, there would also be eight new. also be eight new trees that would be planted along the rear and west sides of the property. The building's architecture includes precast concrete panels with sand blasted surfaces, the design and color would match that of the existing building, it's a little hard to see here, but if you look at the center picture, the existing building is to the left of the section line A, pretty much the same design, same material, the height also would match that of the existing building, which is currently twenty-four feet above grade. As the board is aware, the annexation agreement authorizing the PUD for corporate woods requires village board approval for site landscaping and architectural revisions, but does not require a public hearing before the planning and zoning commission, so for tonight, if the committee feels that the addition, which includes site plan revisions, architectural design of the addition, and landscape amendments is appropriate, then staff should be prepared, directed to prepare an ordinance approving the revisions, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet, and Mr. Dorn is here representing the company and can answer any questions that you may have.
Can you state your name for the record?
Yes, William Dorn, from Combined Development Services of Illinois.
Okay, all right, what's the size of this lot? Do you know?
Four sixty-seven by two fifty.
We're, we're calculating it right now.
Four sixty-seven by two fifty.
Four sixty-seven, that's right, four, I'm saying how you read that.
Four hundred and sixty-seven thousand four feet, is that what you got?
Four sixty-seven times two fifty equals?
It's two acres.
Two acres, approximately two acres.
It's two acres.
All right, is there, it, it, it's from staff, is there any input here on, you know, ingress egress?
We're comfortable with.
Parking lot, you know?
The ingress egress would remain the same off of Forest Edge Drive, there's two access points to the property, parking would still comply with the requirements applicable to corporate woods, which is based on number of employees in the warehouse and the size of the office, setback dimensions, twenty-five feet in the rear, twenty-five feet in the side would also comply, and the building coverage would not exceed the point five which is allowed in corporate woods, so everything's fully compliant, staff has no objection to their request before you.
Is that what it is, point five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
The roof flashing, match, the new parapet cap flashing will match the existing?
Actually, our parapet will be a slightly different design, only because the original building when it was constructed was one of the very earliest precast concrete buildings, and it had a cap that wasn't sufficient, it was only about two inches deep, and caused problems with the panels, so we're going to match more up-to-date, modern flashing designs, but it'll match in color and everything, but it'll be slightly larger.
So with approval on this, then you'll start, what, technical review?
Yeah, well, we've actually gone through a technical review process, because there's not a public hearing process, then it goes straight to the board, and again, if you direct staff to prepare an ordinance, we'll do so, and then it comes back to the next meeting for a formal approval.
All right, well, is there a motion to that extent?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, any further cameras or questions, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Schultz.
Aye.
Marport.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Takaoka, Brown.
Okay, motion carries.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yep.
All right, next is automatic license plate reader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I figured you were the chief.
Yeah, we're, we're here tonight to discuss with the board, and in broader sense, announce to the community that we have a proposal that would like for the, for the board's consideration, our presentation, we've, we've provided a report to the board, tonight we're going to have Deputy Chief Zimmerman provide a brief presentation, furthering the discussion about automatic license plate reader system, and then we'll be able to answer any questions after that, so, with that, Patrick Zimmerman's here.
Thank you, Chief, tonight we come before the board, seeking to implement license plate reader technology in the village, the police department has budgeted money the last two budget years for an LPR, at the same time, we've heavily researched LPR technology, and until recently, the department just wasn't ready to come to the board to make the move on LPR technology because of some legacy issues, after extensive research and talking with several other departments, we found a company we believe that will meet our needs, and the chief and I are very comfortable with recommending, this vendor is unique in that it can set up multiple fixed cameras within the village to benefit police operations, the license plate reader captures vehicles' registrations, their color, the type of vehicle, the system also has the capability to think like a detective, it can recognize manufacturers' logos, their shapes, their rear light design, it's all with, housed within a weatherproof unit, solar powered run, and this company is responsible for all the software upkeep, technology, it's all internalized in this one camera. Here's how an LPR is going to help the department and the village, mainly by crime prevention, officers will receive immediate notification on an NCIC hot file list, which consists of alerts to stolen vehicles, wanted persons, missing persons, amber alerts, silver alerts, we're also able to enter our own information through bolos into the system, which will assist with our investigations and solving crime, I'll give you an example, last week, there was a resident that had their vehicle stolen, that stolen auto was immediately driven to another jurisdiction where another crime is committed, this is very common in the Chicagoland area, we have several offenders from the city come up and steal a vehicle, and it's used in the commission of another crime, if we had this LPR technology, we could have immediately entered it into the system and had a chance perhaps to capture that vehicle and prevent a crime. This LPR technology will aid us in investigations by providing strong leads immediately, investigators will be able to go back in search for known investigative leads or inter-vehicle information to assist them with clearing open investigations and arresting those responsible for committing crimes within the village. Though this technology is advanced, it's not new to Vernon Hills, from 2012 through 2015, the department used its own type of license plate reader technology, if you remember, we had a string of residential burglaries where thirty families were victimized from an organized crime gang that was responsible for hundreds of residential burglaries in the Chicagoland area, the department strategically placed trail cameras in targeted areas, and after many years and a lot of manpower and effort, we developed a lead based on a single image captured by one of those cameras, to get to that point, it was a lot of hard work, I brought in Sergeant Gillespie, who was a big role in that, and certainly Director Brown and his public work staff having to go out on a weekly basis to change all the batteries in those cameras to keep them running for three years straight, just to capture that one lead, the good news is, that led to an arrest, which solved all thirty of our residential burglaries and over three hundred in the Chicagoland area, that being said, if we had this LPR technology, we could have reviewed images, gotten information a lot quicker, and possibly prevented several of those burglaries from happening. I want to talk a little bit about recent crime trends in our town, we pulled some data, from November first through January thirty-first, during our busy holiday season, we had twenty-two retail thefts where offenders fled the scene, over fifteen thousand dollars of merchandise was lost, in many of these crimes, a partial vehicle description and license plate was witnessed, and this LPR would have given us instant leads in those cases, recently, we had an armed robbery in town at one of our local businesses, where the victim provided a partial vehicle description, if we had this LPR technology, we would have had the capability to instantly check the system to see if the LPR captured any images at the time of the crime for a potential match and lead, and finally, and you see the image up here on, on your screen now, on a recent retail theft, with a professional, organized criminal crew targeting our town, the department was ready and proactive, this is a situation where the police department, I think, did everything right, we had an officer assigned to the area, monitoring those stores that were targets, we get a nine-one-one call, come in, and information of a partial vehicle, this officer sees the vehicle, fly by him at a high rate of speed, and through our MVRS in-car system, this is the image that was captured, he attempted to stop the vehicle, and it fled, and despite capturing that vehicle right there, we still don't know what that plate is, and we still don't know who the offenders are, and that's putting everything, all of our tools together, and these people still got away, if we had an LPR in place, we would have captured that license plate.
In the vehicle.
In the vehicle.
Yeah.
You got it.
No, I mean, in our vehicle, no, okay, the cameras elsewhere.
No, no, the LPR technology would have captured that, that license plate there that we can't read, provided an instant lead, this crew is actively working in the Chicagoland area, they will come to our town again and strike one of our stores, and we could prevent that with an LPR capturing that image. Correct, we know that vehicle would have passed one of our cameras that we put in place exiting our town, and I think the chief's going to wrap this up for us here.
Okay.
So, yeah, let me just highlight, we, we see this tool as providing two basic avenues of how this helps keep the community safe, first is that proactive approach, that our dispatch center and every police officer that has an MDT open in their car will get notified when a stolen vehicle or a vehicle plate linked to a wanted person crosses one of those cameras, in many, many cases, that will happen fast enough for us to be able to identify that vehicle, perhaps even see that vehicle stop where its destination is, and take appropriate action, that's kind of the proactive side of it, I want to emphasize on this point, that these cameras do not take the license plate and run every license plate against the state leads or secretary state traffic system, that's not what's happening, the National Criminal Information System Center, NCIC, is a national system that any jurisdiction in, in the country can upload a wanted vehicle, a stolen vehicle into that system, and then they run, they post what's called a hot list, and this is merely capturing every license plate and running it against that hot sheet, and the reason I want to emphasize this is because there's people that might be critical of such technology that we are trying to track or keep track of everybody that's driving through town, this technology does not do that, it merely runs it against a known list of stolen vehicles or vehicles associated with a wanted or missing person, in many cases, an amber alert or silver alert would be on that hot list, so that's a proactive measure, the reactive measure, as Deputy Chief alluded to, we see as a very, very important investigative tool, we many times get a partial description of a vehicle fleeing the scene of a crime, and with that information, our investigators will be able to go and look and say, well, what, when did this crime happen, say it happened at eleven-thirty a.m., and it was a blue pickup truck, this system allows the investigator to go into the system and say, show me all blue pickup trucks that passed one of our cameras in that timeframe, maybe there's fifteen of them, well, they'll go and take those fifteen then and start conducting some investigative leads to try and figure out, you know, who might be the possible offender, that is, that is, I can't emphasize enough how important having license plate information is, because criminals tend to use what we call, you know, work cars, they, they have cars that they use for their working crimes, and when we can link that to other communities and then feed them that information, they know what plate they're looking for, we can really do a much better job controlling or investigating and clearing these crimes, so that's kind of the reactive approach with it, so it's also important that as this information, I want to clarify that as this, as these images of the back of these license plates, the back of the vehicle and these license plates are captured, that is maintained on a database held by this company for thirty days, not for years and years and years, but for thirty days, and it is used for law enforcement purposes only, someone cannot call the police department and say, I think my spouse is having an affair, can you tell me if they were driving through town last night, that's not how this works, it's a limited amount of information, because we are going to know within thirty days, if we need to go and look, if, if someone hasn't reported a crime to us within thirty days, chances are there's not a vehicle that, or that useful information, so I want to kind of point out a couple of those safeguards, obviously, the system has audit trail, it's utilized by police professionals that have to follow policies on only utilizing such a system for law enforcement measures, we have supervision and audits to make sure that is being done, it's, it's really not that much different, from a financial aspect, and one of the reasons we're here talking to you tonight, this historically, the legacy systems that we mentioned, historically have been very expensive, not uncommon to spend thirty thousand dollars to do one direction of one intersection, to get one direction of one, one intersection, and, and have a, quite a heavy workload on your internal technical staff to upkeep the system, also, historically, these systems have been installed in police cars that are out on patrol, and think about it, some communities use that in a different fashion, communities with a lot of parking enforcements that are doing, say, timed enforcement, parallel street parking, they utilize these systems quite effectively for that particular tool, we don't need it for that, and to have this installed in the cars isn't, isn't going to really help us as, as much as, whereas fixed cameras, so what we are proposing is a ten-camera deployment that would allow us to have images of many of the cars that are commuting through town, not, we're not going to get every intersection with that, but we know where our crime happens, and we also know where criminals typically flee town and what direction, and so a combination of vehicles coming in and, and exiting out of town, we think ten cameras would do with that, the proposal we have from the company, that cost us twenty thousand dollars a year, and they've proposed a two-year agreement, and so we're here to answer more questions, but just to share with you what we're really looking for, some direction, and if it's favorable, we would come back to the board with, with a ordinance asking the board to consider authorizing us to enter into a two-year agreement for twenty thousand dollars a year to deploy this system, I'll share with you that where we do have those funds budgeted this year is in our asset forfeiture, fees or seizure fund, which is adequate, adequately funded to do that, the company's also offered a sixty-day trial, that if they go, they go through all the motion of installing, setting it up, giving us all the passwords to use this web-based system, and in sixty days, if we're not happy, we are out of the contract, they come in, they take all their stuff down to the village, doesn't give them a dime.
How many units are we talking about?
I said ten. Ten, ten cameras, each camera can cover about up to two, two and a half lanes of traffic, so for, for instance, if, you know, we, I don't want to go into exactly where we, because we'll probably change a little bit, but we have ideas- Twenty-one's not a good location, because it gets so wide, that's right. But just, so just east of, say, Melody Farm, you can envision, that's, we know a lot of our criminals flee, they look to get to the highway, and we'll have images of those, of those license plates that have committed crimes. So with that, I'll turn it over to other questions.
Trustee Cook.
Well, and this is not red light cameras, because that's what's been in the news a lot, and people don't like those. This has nothing to do with any kind of, you know, traffic violations or anything like that.
That's correct. There is, this, this is not issuing any citations, it's not generating any, any fine structure whatsoever. Are we going to make some arrests as a result of these images? We, we certainly will.
Well, and this will start to help with, and maybe you've heard it before, but isn't that whole idea of, of a grab-and-go starting to be more of a new thing and starting to happen more often, where, where they're going into stores and just grabbing everything they can in a few seconds and, and dashing?
You're absolutely correct. Unfortunately, it's not a new thing. It's, they're active in the area, but you're correct, our Alta store has gotten hit five times in twenty nineteen.
It's been on the news more often lately, so.
You got it. And this image on this last one, it's one of those crews. Get in there, grab and go as quick as you can.
Yeah, so this, this sounds like a, a great idea. I'm all, all for it.
Trustee Marquardt.
Out of the ten cameras, does this also do where you see a stolen vehicle or someone, what happens in some cases, they take a plate off of somebody's car, so it's reported that it's stolen, goes on to some other vehicle?
Yeah.
And so does this also react, because you were mentioning, it tells the color, it tells the make, tells?
A unique thing about that, Trustee Marquardt, is, in the kind of market that it thinks like a detective, you know, you have that detective in your unit that's a car guy, and he can look at an image and look at the taillights and say, oh, that's a Toyota, Toyota Camry. This system has built an algorithm that does that. It is learning data, and let's say they don't have a license plate on the car, they're coming into town and committing a crime without a license plate, it can still read the color of the car, the make's logo, what the taillights look that, and give you an idea saying, hey, this is a Toyota Camry. It also thinks, we know that witnesses aren't always clear on a color. They might say white, but it might be light blue or light gray. It's built in that it knows that, so if you're looking for a Toyota Camry that they think is white, it can also pull the light blue ones, the light gray ones, just so we don't miss that information.
This is, this is amazing, so I'm pretty much for it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Dr. Appenex.
I'll defer to trustee.
The question was, does it read the disintegrating license plates, the discussion we had earlier?
Oh, my God, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, the, the, it, it's demonstrated to read a lot of different license plates. We, we poked at the company a lot that there, there are some covers that can defeat the read of the license plate. It actually is taking about five, six, seven images of each, of each car as it passes, and it doesn't have a hundred percent, we don't want to give anyone the impression that it's a hundred percent foolproof. Obviously, the way traffic moves, you could have a, you could have a semi-tractor screening a smaller vehicle, so you're not going to get every, every plate.
And that's why we don't want to put it on top of an intersection, because the chance to be screened increases there. But they, this company has technology to defeat criminals that are trying to defeat us by putting covers over their license plate. It's developing technology to defeat a lot of that.
Great. All right.
So how?
Yeah.
How much are, are these cameras individually, or how much more would, for, for the eleventh or fifteenth one?
Sure, sure. The, 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 the offer, their, their, their structure here is two thousand dollars per camera per year. And it's basically a lease agreement that they're responsible for installation, the connectivity, there's a cellular connectivity to it, seen as a power source. If there's not a local power source in the pole, they put a solar panel on it. If there's not a pole in the ground where we need a camera, they put a pole in the ground. That's, that's all cost borne by them. If we see a pattern and believe that it's more advantageous to move a camera to another location, they will come out and move a camera to another location. We see potential for greater use of this technology. Once we really get comfortable, we see other locations. They have a model that allows private homeowners association and private property owners to also lease a camera for, for their specific interest, but authorize us to tie into that. And that, in fact, has been the case in many jurisdictions, where a homeowner association sees a rash of, of burglaries, maybe that village or community doesn't have enough resources to put a camera right there, the homeowner association might choose to do one, but tie into the system. Again, we know we have a, say, an overnight burglar, burglary in a particular neighborhood. You don't see a lot of vehicles passing between perhaps one a.m. and four a.m. when that crime took place. Pretty easy to go and look and check every vehicle that passed through that camera and get that intelligence. So we see potential for wider use of this. We think, starting with ten, is going to give us a real good, a real good assessment of how effective they are. It would be my desire to report back to the board several months down the road, no longer than about six months down the road, certainly before next budget planning season, perhaps with the recommendation of where we go next.
I got a question for staff. Do you guys think this is a good idea? As in Mark, Village Manager?
I thought that might happen. I wholeheartedly concur with this assessment, for all of the reasons that the police department has mentioned already. This allows you extra sets of eyes where you need them, but you can't afford to put police. Using the example that Pat raised a few minutes ago with Greg's Landing, there's only four ways in and out of Greg's Landing. You could cover every one of those for eight thousand dollars for a year and have a record, basically, of everyone coming in and out of that subdivision. If you were having a problem with a burglary issue or, or any type of crimes in the area, it would be a simple matter of setting up the extra cameras, recording the license plates, and at least we would have suspects. In, in the, again, using the same example, we had the trail cameras, or deer cameras, as we called them. They were really great, but someone had to go out and take the memory card out of it, download the memory card, and look at literally thousands of photographs to find out, you know, and look at the dates and timestamps on them to find out if this might possibly be a suspect. Someone had to go out and replace the batteries, and then someone eventually stole the camera.
Is there any concern about someone stealing or defacing the cameras?
I, I think probably not more than other public utilities that are twelve to fourteen feet up in the air. It's, it's possible. They're not going to be able to do anything with it, and we'll have an image, because it, 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 it goes off motion, and so to grab an image of anything larger than a small animal that passes through, in, in front of it.
It also does motorcycles, bicycles, smaller vehicles, mopeds.
Pedestrians.
Okay.
Will, will this increase asset forfeitures? Will it be self-sustaining in any way? I don't know if any of those crimes?
No, I don't want to propose that. I, I think that it's very likely we can, we can afford to take that out of the, this year's funds, perhaps a second year. I think it's pretty comfortable to anticipate that we could do the two-year agreement out of asset forfeitures if we need to. I think by then, I'll have information for the board to consider whether or not this is worthwhile funding through, through Village Means beyond that.
So you're looking for a motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary?
Took the words out of my mouth.
Yes, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm for it.
Okay.
So, as so stated, a motion to direct staff to prepare the necessary documents to move forward on the acquisition of these cameras.
I'm second, I'd have you.
Second.
Got time, or you second?
Yeah, Mark, I'm Mike to go.
Okay. If there's no further comments or questions, roll call.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustees Brown, Schultz.
Aye.
Marquardt.
Aye.
Cook.
Aye.
Oppenheim.
Aye.
Tacaoka.
Okay, motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn committee in the hall?
So made.
Second.
Motion is second. Can we do an aye on this one?
Yes.
Okay. All right, those in favor indicate by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any nays? Okay, the ayes have it, we, the meeting, committee in the hall is adjourned.